I will call this work session meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, February 20th of the year 2024. The time is 3:01 PM. Ms. Cordova, would you call the roll for us, please?
Mr. Preather? Mr. Scott? Ms. Garza? Mayor Houston?
I'm here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Gleason?
Here.
Mr. Mendoza?
Here.
We have our co-present mayor.
Okay, and we will watch for Ms. Garza because I think she's going to be here. Okay, citizen comment time. The city council welcomes comments from the public. When you state your name, you'll have three minutes. You will see it appear on the screen. When you're in yellow, you have 20 seconds left. And when it says time is up, your time is up, and we may hear a bell. So, in order, and everyone's in person, will be Tom Goines, Mike McLeod, and Virginia Parker. Tom Goines, you will be our first speaker this afternoon. We'll get you there. Nope. I'll be out in a minute. My timing is up there. No, we don't start till your comments start.
It's hard to go from winning the water safari to hobbling around with Kennedy's disease, but that's life. I just want to thank you guys.
Your name?
You can start now.
Your name, yes.
Oh, my name's Tom Goines. I handed out some public comments. And the main thing I want to push for, and I know it's a hard sell, but I'd love for y'all to include the ETJ in this ordinance. As you know, I'm in that ETJ, and so is Don's Fish Camp in Texas A&amp;T. And we have the most litter, probably per square foot, of any river in Texas. And the more can vans that pass, the more it focuses the trash and the alcohol on our section of the river. I've included a section on how to shotgun, in case you're interested. But every beach on our section of the river is shotgun beach. Every rock is shotgun rock. Every cove is shotgun cove. The bottom line is, people stop, stand in a circle, shotgun, and then spike the beer can. If they're not shotgunning, they're doing other drinking games. It all involves 12 ounces aluminum cans. Now, we're not asking for enforcement. We would take care of hiring park rangers, maybe two weekends, maybe just weekdays would be all it takes. But I would love to start the process this year, to make it the law, and then work on it later. We know it's a long process, but please consider including ETJ and not just city limits. And the other thing that's very important is under authority of park rangers, right now it just says, "Within city parks," and it stops. And I really think you need to add "or on or in the public waterway" because there aren't going to be medical emergencies between city parks. There aren't going to be problems in the city limits, like even downstream at Formula 110, that's in the city limit, where you may need to send a river ranger, an EMT. So consider changing that, making sure you add that phrase, "or on or in the public waterway," to their jurisdiction. And if we can hire them, we'll do it. We'll take care of the enforcement, just considering including us in the jurisdiction of this ordinance. Thanks again. It's been a long time. 2011. Thanks a lot.
Just in time. Our next speaker is Mike McLeod.
Mike McLeod, City Council of Martindale, Place 4. First of all, I want to thank you. Thanks for doing the courageous thing. I know through experience how difficult it is, and again, greatly appreciate it. And to follow up with what Mr. Goines said, I can't make any promises, but if y'all considered ETJ, you've got the backing of me as a city councilperson in Martindale. And I will do all I can to assist you on that. Another point, enforcement. Mike Rhodes is a good friend of mine. He was a manager of Lions Club for many years, and we talked about can bans. And I said, "You know what? The Lions Club could make money at this. They could be part of the enforcement because they could sell a container like this and put their logo on it, and, you know, soft drinks, whatever. You could sell carbonated drinks cheaper than HEB." And like I had the conversation with Mike Rhodes, if somebody comes up from Houston, it's 100 degrees, and the guy's got a choice of putting his beer in a non-disposable container or having a can of beer, they're going to conform. And people will adjust. And it's all about education. And that's the same thing that we've gone through at Martindale. And we had very little issues with the can ban. And in fact, I mean, a handful of citations. And most people are, once they understand, they have no problem with it. And it's a good thing, and I think, like I said, and I was quoted on KXAN, that I'm not against drinking, I'm against trash. And that's another thing. I drink beer. I like to tube. I like to hit the river. I think you have a right to have a beer or whatever. But that's not the problem. It's not the beer, it's the can, or whatever it is. So here's an example, and by the way, I'm going to bear some gifts today. So here it is, some containers.
Take those. Just take the whole box. Thank you. We'll distribute. Thank you.
If you observe those, those are very inexpensive. And for example, take the lid off and see what it does. No, just the opening, the little... Yeah, I should have kept one. Look at that. Fully contained, nothing gets in the river.
Can't lose the lid.
Nothing lose. You could take the shaker ball out unless you've got a cocktail or something in there. But that's a prime example. That's two beers right there. And that would be perfect for the Lions Club, for anybody. And like I said, I got them at Walmart, and they're real cheap. So again, I want to thank you for all y'all's support.
All right. Our next speaker is Virginia Parker.
Hello, council. I'm Virginia Parker. I'm with the San Marcos River Foundation. I am here today to talk to y'all about two things. The first thing is the Buc-Ee's. We're very pleased that that is out of the 500-year floodplain, very pleased that they're going to do their first-ever rainwater harvesting. Lights are going to be downward and compliant with, you know, not that it's a dark skies location, but they'll implement some of those practices. Those are all good things. Real happy about the oil and gas separator. One question I have for y'all is how often will that be inspected and maintained? We're finding that things that are in development agreements aren't inspected and maintained often enough, so that might be something to look at. Real happy with the finances that might be brought to San Marcos and noted that there's a one-time payment of $100,000. We have heard everyone talk about the fact that San Marcos does not have enough money to pay for an additional marshal to manage the incoming, hopefully incoming, beverage disposable container ban. That is a great place to put that money. If we want that to be successful, we all know that the Marshals Department and the Parks Department need support financially. They need more staff. If y'all pass this Buc-Ee's, then that is going to be $100,000 in your pocket, and that's exactly what we think you should do with it. Next year, y'all will have paid parking in city parks. So really, you have this one-year gap, and you might have just found a way to deal with that. One other thing I'd like to note, I know that that's clay right there, which is good. It's not the karst recharge zone. They are implementing, or proposal, of double-contained gas containers. If y'all will remember, the proposed gas station over the recharge zone at Craddock and Wonderworld had suggested triple-contained. Just throwing that out there as an additional benefit, considering it is very close to the Blanco River, despite the fact that that is all clay right there. So that's all I want to talk about with Buc-Ee's. The second thing I want to talk to y'all about is SB 2038. We know that there have been a lot of requests for removal from the ETJ within San Marcos. I hope my friends down in Martindale will join y'all in fighting SB 2038. There are other municipalities in Texas fighting SB 2038. If we lose these developments and land out of the ETJ of municipalities in Texas, we know that counties don't have the authority to protect our natural resources. They can't do it. So I hope that y'all will please fight SB 2038. Thank you.
Okay, and that wraps up our citizen comment time period. So now, we will go to presentations. Is your microphone on?
I think it is now. All right. The city council convened an executive session pursuant to the following section of the Texas Government Code. A) Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, and 551.072, deliberation regarding real property to receive legal advice regarding and deliberate possible options for development of city-owned property on South Valerupus Street. B) Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice concerning requirements pertaining to land owner petition for release of land from the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. And C) Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding a possible settlement agreement with West East Design Group and related to the fire station number six generator.
Wait, no, that's item two. We just need item one for right now.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Yeah. You did read item one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, we're good.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I was muting people. We've had two of you turn your microphones on on the Zoom, and I was turning those off, and I'm sorry I didn't catch you.
Okay.
So I think we're okay now.
It's actually, it's not executive session item?
No.
It's the presentation.
It's just item one.
Okay, all right, okay. So, "Receive a staff update on the new city hall and provide direction to staff."
But hold that thought for the other one, because we'll need that a little bit. Ms. Reyes?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Today's presentation on the new city hall project will recap prior council direction, provide research Assistant City Manager Lori Moyer collected in her travels to different municipalities in Texas, and outline a number of next steps and staff recommendations to advance this effort. I do want to say, I'm going to just take a point of privilege just to say that this is a true public servant, Ms. Moyer. She goes on vacation during the Christmas holidays with her family, so the city's not paying for her to do this travel. We're not funding her travel. And she is sending us pictures of city halls. That's what they decide to use their time, is to go and visit city halls in other communities to see what their city halls look like and provide that tour to us. So just wanted to give a shout out to her, and y'all will get to see the fruits of her travel as well through this presentation. So it's been evident for a while that a new city hall facility is needed, and the current renovations are only an interim measure to provide adequate workspace for our staff. There is built-up anticipation from the community, as well as our employees, about this project. The examples we will review show the opportunity we have to build this facility as a community's house, a space that is welcoming to the public, serves multiple functions, and makes our residents proud. I want to thank Lori for the time she's dedicated to establishing the framework for such an important project that will have a lasting impact in our community. We look forward to city council's direction on the proposed next steps. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Lori for the presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. What can I say? My family indulges me a lot, so. Quickly, I have a lot of slides. You all have probably looked through them in your packet. I'm going to go through this fairly quickly. What I wanted to remind you of is that last time when we met, we talked a little bit about the history of the San Marcos city halls. We talked a little bit about the different uses that can be in city halls, covered studies, and we discussed the benefits and constraints of the current location, a location across the street, and a downtown location. And from that update, council gave us this direction, that you preferred the site across the street versus the current location. That was for visibility. But you still were interested in a city presence downtown. You gave us direction to look at incorporating municipal court into city hall, and some of the concepts that came out of the previous studies were looking at incorporating potentially affordable housing, childcare, welcome center. You really wanted us to consider partnerships and alternative funding mechanisms. So just to remind you with a visual, because it's been a while since we've had this, this is the preferred option. You can see that city hall sits across the street. It's that kind of, you know, barbell-shaped, maybe, facility there. And then on the current site, we had some mixed use, a retail office, and then we had some affordable housing incorporated in. The size of the city hall was, we were using about 85,000 square feet. There was consideration for a parking garage. We were looking at about a four-acre site. Because of the proximity to the San Marcos River and the fact that we're in a San Marcos water quality zone, we wanted to have water quality features. And then we also were looking at improvements to Hopkins Street to create what the study had identified as a bio-boulevard. So on the current site, where we are now, there was, as I said, some flex space, a parking garage as required, some townhomes, and then incorporating some park and green space. So what have we done? Oh, let me go back one. So what have we done since we had this update? Well, we've dug in a lot to understand public-private partnerships and other funding mechanisms. Joe has attended several P3 conferences. We have multiple city staff that have attended workshops to understand those kinds of public-private opportunities. And we have now incorporated a city team that is meeting monthly from all various departments that help look at some of the constraints and challenges to try to make this a successful project. So this is that Metroplex tour that I went on at Christmas time. And so one of the things that I wanted to do is, this image was in my head here, and I thought, well, you know, let's truth-test this. Let's look at some other city halls. So Metroplex was a great place for me to go because I could see a lot of city halls in a relatively proximate distance. And so there's quite a few pictures I'm going to run through. I was looking at, in these examples, comparisons of some of the concepts that we've talked about at our city hall. I've also tried to identify the year that the city hall was built, the size of the site, and the departments located there, where it's located in the community. And then I always use population as a gauge for me when I'm looking at other communities to help me relate that to San Marcos. So I started the tour with Lewisville. Lewisville is an interesting city. It's about 131,000, bigger than San Marcos. Their city hall was built, as you can see, in 2003. It doesn't include all of their city staff, but a good portion, about 100 city staff are there. It sits one block off their main downtown, so if I use the pointer here, so this street right here is really their prime downtown, kind of their historic area. You can see the city hall is just one block off. Right across the street is a really nice gathering plaza park space. It was really important in reading through the history of this city hall. Lewisville really wanted their city hall to reflect their community and the historic downtown, so you can see the use of the red brick. They do have an older facility that they incorporated. It was an original waterworks facility. Then if we go to Flower Mound. Flower Mound, just down the road, the city hall was built in 2018. It houses 137 staff, which is a good amount of most of their office-type staff. Their police and municipal court are located elsewhere, Parks is with an activity center, and then they have a separate operation and maintenance staff area, very similar to what we do. They had a lot of ideas in their city hall that we talked about in wanting to incorporate in ours. They have artwork display area. They have a TV studio that helps them with their public outreach. They really wanted to look at sustainable office design. They have a lot of glass for natural light, additional insulation, LED lighting. This sits on about a seven-acre site. Lewisville was on, I think I said, about a four-acre site. Yeah, and so this has, let me show you some of the pictures. So this gives you a front. This is a much more modern facility. Lewisville is not, it's more of a, not Lewisville. Flower Mound is a newer community, so a more modern facility was something that they wanted to pursue. You can see this is the entrance into the council chambers. To the council entrance, they have a fountain there. This is off the back of the facility, and you can see that they have a large water-quality drainage pond there, but they really use that to incorporate it into the overall design. And I thought that was really attractive. Those windows there are really office windows so that staff and the community have this adjacent area. Population of Flower Mound's about 78,000, so fairly close to our size. The next one we looked at was Grapevine, you know, and this is one of the older ones. This one was built in 1997, and this is one that's right in the middle of downtown, and folks are aware of Grapevine. They have a very dynamic historic downtown, lots of activities going on. They consolidated their council and their staff into one building, but it's not a very big site, and so they are limited there. It was very important that it fit in with this historic because it's right on their main street. It's on only six tenths of an acre, so it's on a very, very tight site. There is here, again, a kind of a public park that's right across the street. That's a gathering spot. Grapevine has a population of about 51,000. Here's a shot. This is the front of the building, so you can see it's not a huge structure. And you can see, here's the back. So it is a tight facility, and the parking is such that they use parking elsewhere. There's a parking lot down the street that's used for it. So that was one of the challenges of being right there in the downtown, is really working with a really tight site. Next, we went to Southlake. This was interesting because Southlake is probably one of the premier cities that developed their city hall and their town square under a public-private partnership. It was built in 1999. It started off with about an 80,000-square-foot government anchor. The facility you see is, I'll show you some pictures of it. This facility is now so big that it incorporates all the city departments, county departments, and the tax assessor collector is in this building, too. It sits on about eight tenths of an acre, so it's just the one block there. There is that huge park, town square, gathering spot out in front. We went on a Sunday, and there was just a ton of activity. This is an aerial view. You can see how large that city hall is, and you can see the large park beside it. The city hall itself is four stories, two-story main lobby. It has the library, the county clerk, and the tax offices on the ground floor. Off the next floor is the council chambers, the municipal courtroom, and other government offices, including utility billing, public safety, city secretary, justice of the peace, and county constable. And then you have planning, economic development, and some other departments up on the third and fourth floors. This is a view from the front, you know, from that large parkland area. This was on a Sunday, and there was just an incredible amount of people. But again, you can see the massive amount of retail that is around this facility. All those parallel streets on either side incorporate retail. Okay, now we're going to go to Colleyville. Again, this was built about the same time, same concept of a city hall built within a private development. It has 52,000 square feet of city hall. It was the anchor in a mixed-use private development. Again, lots of open windows, porches, plazas. This facility, the library, is on one end. It sits on about 1.3 acres, and it is, it's kind of hard to see right here, but I'll point out, it sits right here. What intrigued me about this is that there is housing surrounding it, so all of this is a residential development. It has a plaza park out in front. And then on the next slide, I wanted to point out how they've incorporated the city hall in this huge recreational facility area. So you can see the blue arrow is pointing to the city hall. You can see all the ballfields, tennis courts around it. So it really had it right there with a recreation area. And I don't, I think I took out, this is a picture of the city hall itself, so the two-story portion is the public library. The three-story portion is the city offices. Here's kind of that same aerial view where you can look at the residential development around it. I was a little skeptical of residential development with a city hall like that, but this is, in this case, this is some high-end residential. There were some people out playing soccer in that plaza. They have concerts there. I ended up talking with a property owner that lives right next door to the city hall, a retired Air Force couple, and they loved it. They moved from elsewhere in Fort Worth and purchased there and really enjoyed the site and did not think that there was a downside to living right with city offices. And that was really interesting to me. These are high-end houses, $750,000 to $1 million, so that was surprising. There are some pictures. These are townhouses, and this corner house is the woman that I talked with. Okay, North Richland Hills. This is a little bit different concept. This is one where it was more of a redevelopment of a site, an underutilized site, and it consolidated city functions and it acted as a catalyst for private development. So this was a former mall site that was vacant, and then it was demoed. The city held a bond election for a new city hall for about $50 million, but once they got into it, it ended up getting closer to about a $70 million, $70 million amount, which included the land acquisition, design, construction, fixtures, equipment. So they had to look at some other funding mechanisms in addition to the voter-approved bonds, which they were able to come up with. This site is about 10 acres, and it has a lot of residential and mixed use around it. North Richland Hills, again, is about 70,000, fairly comparable to us. This is that main drive going into city hall. What was interesting about city hall is it incorporated all the city functions, very much like what we were thinking about. You can see that they have the logistics, they have the city court, the city hall itself, there is the public safety area, and they even have a jail incorporated in this facility. Here's a picture of the entrance to the municipal court. Has a separate entrance on one side. Here's a, kind of in the middle, in that center circular area, is the city council chambers and a lot of the city staff. And then you can look down this leg here on the north side, which incorporates the public safety and a jail facility. This is right across the street from city hall, some pretty intense use. Again, this was a Sunday afternoon. This construction of the city hall really helped to catalyze the rest of the area, so you can see some other more home So you can see some other more home-style things being built. So I, the biggest takeaways from looking at these sites and, and staff is looking, I've kind of challenged people as they're out and about, look at its, other city halls, think about ideas that we might want to incorporate. But the big takeaways for me were, you know, the city hall is important to reflect the community. You, you want the city hall to be that catalyst for development around it. And surprisingly enough, it was, residential was a good fit, which was something that I would not have, that I did not initially think was positive. All right, Flugerville. We are very fortunate to have a local case study for a public-private partnership model. Just in case folks don't know exactly, Flugerville, it sits between Austin and Round Rock, east of IH35, and it has a little piece of, a little leg that touches SH130. It has a population of about 67,000. So they started out very much like San Marcos started out, 2018, with a needs assessment. They really wanted a new city hall. And so they worked towards a, a bond election. One of the things that really catalyzed them is that in 2019, they got a proposal from a developer to include city hall in a public or a private development near SH130. And the council was like, no, we're not interested. We want city hall downtown. So they put together a bond committee for the 2020, for 2020 election. The bond committee, which will be moving forward, did not recommend a city hall in the bond election. They focused instead on transportation parks and a multi-generational rec center. That was about a $193 million bond election. The rec center passed at 47 million, but they didn't really have a site for a rec center. So what they did in 2021 is council said, look, we need to go back. We want to look at this again. We really need a city hall. We need to figure out where we're going to put this rec center. So it just happened that a, a site nearby came up for sale. They asked staff to negotiate on it. The, the committee, the bond committee, was kind of informed of what was going on. And so they recommended that that site be purchased for a new city hall and to locate the rec center on. They really felt like looking at a P3 was the best way to go to meet the funding for city hall. So city council went forward and issued RFQs in late 2021 for P3 financial services and owner representative services. 2022, they got, they awarded contracts for those to be reviewed. They created a downtown-y stakeholder group, which was a group of citizens that were recommended by city council and staff. They were educated by those consultants that came on to really understand how this thing would work. And they made a recommendation to the city council that the council pursue P3 partnership and go for a solicitation of a master developer. So that process took about, I'd say about six months to go through that process. But it was very, very helpful for, for that to occur. So this kind of gives you an idea of the 25-acre site that they ended up purchasing. They pulled, you know, fund balance. They used a lot of money just to purchase the site. Flugerville is, is not as blessed as San Marcos with a beautiful downtown like we have. But they do have this, this area right down in here, which has some of their more, you know, core downtown facilities. These red roofs here are their current city hall. So you can see it's very much like our condition. It's, it's hard to consolidate enough sites to really get a, a big city hall in the downtown. So what they decided to do is, with the purchase of the site, they wanted to expand their downtown. So they went forward with the purchase of this 29-acre site with the goal of expanding Main Street across the creek and into this facility. So earlier this past year, they approved the negotiating agreement with Griffin Swerinton. And they are going to move forward with the construction of a 91,000-square-foot city hall, 120,000-square-foot rec center, and then all the infrastructure with a roadway extension. And so they anticipate construction beginning in 2024. So this gives you an idea of phase one. Now, one of the things that happened with this one is, unlike San Marcos, this site did not have, if we're looking at our sites here, it's a little bit more remote, a little bit more suburban, maybe. There is an HEB right across the street here. But when the P3 analysis occurred and they went out for the master developer, they did not really have enough gravity to include all the other mixed use that would help support the city hall. So they decided, and the stakeholder committee decided, that they wanted to go ahead and move forward with the recreation center. There is some small retail included. You can see a plaza. They're staying with surface parking right now. And then you can see the city hall right here. There is a neighborhood here, and that was one of the things that the stakeholder group really worked on, is education of the neighborhood, really bringing the neighborhood in and gathering that input. So this was viewed as a successful project. The other thing is the city council also extended their tours. They had a, a downtown tours, and they looked and extended it along the corridor, and that became another mechanism for funding. So here are some images of what this thing is going to look like. This, you can see, is the retail portion incorporated in the multi-generational center. Again, this is some that's adjacent to city hall. Here is the city hall facility, a large facility, 91,000 square feet. Again, lots of sustainable landscaping. Here's the recreational center. So you can really see what they went forward with. Now, this is the one where I really feel like it was important in what they did in educating the community. Because they didn't have the, the synergy to move forward with this site, what the master developer really said is, "After they did their in-depth market analysis, developers expressed to council hesitation for multifamily and office space in the current recessive climate." So in response to these market conditioners, conditions, the, the developers broke it into two phases. So what they said is, the most important thing you can do is start. The city needs to create a destination. And the phase one was what they put together that achieves, was achievable and creates the momentum for subsequent phases down the road, which will then be used under the tours to help pay for that. You can see ultimately, the city issued about $200 million between the, the multi-generational center and city hall. So city council made that commitment. It is not GO bonds, other than for the recreation center. They issued CO bonds from the tours facility. So what did we, what did I learn from this one and what are we learning from this? Theirs was about a six-year process. But once they made the decision to move forward with the consultants, information came together pretty quickly that allowed the council to make decisions and get out there and get the public informed, so we, they knew which path to take. What they did is they expanded their downtown to accommodate the site. So they, just like us, they wanted to help their downtown, but it wasn't as doable, so they pushed it forward or expanded it, looking to create a destination. And then they looked at the tours-backed certificates of obligation. I took a look to see how far their down, their new city hall is to the old city hall. It's about 2,000 feet between those two sites. If we look at our site here to the square, our square, it's about 3,600. So we're in that, in that range, and it's about 2,000 square feet, 2,000 feet to the river. Sorry about that. Okay, so we have a, we've used Flugerville a lot. They will continue to assist us. They've helped us with a lot of templates and scopes of work, and that's what we've been working on. Oh, and I know Shane has his hand up. Do you want me to get to the end?
I know, we're gonna wait, because he, he's getting his face on camera. If his face isn't on camera, he's not officially here. And I'm not calling on him with a question if he's not officially here. So we're gonna get him there. It is now, but yeah.
Okay, well then, I'm almost to the end of this. So one of the other questions that we had, and we, we've done some investigation with our real estate and our legal folks, is looking at city hall and parkland dedication. And we had a few message board questions on this, so I want to make sure that I, I clarify it. So you can see on this diagram that this outside border was the original parkland dedication, or the original property that came to the city. And I think it was, the parkland dedication happened in the 60s, except for this four-acre site right here, which was under lease to the Army Reserves. So everything else within the site was dedicated as parkland. In the 70s, we took a bond election forward and released the parkland for a city hall on this 14-acre site. And then subsequently, we went to the voters and got a release for the library and then the activity center. So what we wanted to verify is, what does that mean for us going forward? So in consultation with our legal folks and going back through the, all the references, because the city hall site was released for the construction of city hall, that placed a condition on that release. And so we really feel like if we are going to use this for something else, other than city hall, that is not just straight parkland, we do need to go back to the voters for that. This four acres is not parkland. And what we can certainly do in these initial phases of the consultant services is to see how much of that can we fit a new city hall and the required, you know, amenities on that site, or do we need more than that? And if we need more than that, then we'd also need to release parkland over here. And so again, I think that as we go into those consultant services and we start laying out in more detail these concepts and educate you all and our stakeholder group, we'll be able to see a path forward much clearer. So with that, I'm just going to go into recommendations and council direction. And I'm going to start with the second bullet first, because I want to explain what these services are. So we have these scopes of work really ready to go out for a request for qualification. There's two consultant services that we're going to be looking for. The P3 financial services is one that really looks at planning and financing options. And so what the scope looks at is the visioning and refinement of what the council goals are for these sites. It looks at what the market conditions are. It looks at delivery option analysis, which would be potential partnerships, land value analysis, a development budget, and a schedule. They also, it would also include developing a master project plan with entitlements. What would be a recommended transaction structure, which is delivery and finance options. And then they would help with solicitation development and procurement assistance. The second consultant is an owner's representative. They provide the architectural and engineering and facilities expertise for city hall construction. We would want them to update the space analysis reflecting the workforce changes since our last study in 2019. And they would help provide project management and quality control throughout the process. So right now, we have included the downtown properties in the financial analysis. We believe that there could be synergy in looking at both sites together, both from a cost-leveraging aspect, as well as looking at city functions that would be appropriate for use downtown. But it does not have to occur together. They could be broken apart and looked at separately. Again, our research has shown that public engagement in the project can help with community education and support. And that's really important when you're looking at an alternative delivery method or even a more traditional debt issuance, because you know that you have a project that has that public support. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I can take questions.
Mr. Scott?
I'm sorry, can you go back to the map and the location? If I'm understanding it correctly, is it across the street over here?
Yeah, let me go back.
So wonderful job on the presentation. I did hear all of it, taking a shower and coming over and everything. The thing is, you just described everything that we have here in San Marcos in one particular area on C.M. Allen, that piece of property down through there, where it faces the river, right? It's land-owned or owned or whatever by private individuals, so it can be negotiated. You could build in phases. You could build high-rises, create housing, right? That the city can actually charge for and make money off the project themselves and pay back their debt and take each floor as they need it as they grow.
Exactly where on C.M. Allen?
Right at the strip, where all those...
Where the Parks Department is currently located, in the chamber, in the state?
Yeah, all the down, that one open strip that we was complaining about, eminent domain in it and all that.
Now wait, which side of C.M. Allen? The riverside or the opposite side?
Opposite side.
Because you said it was next to the river, and that's where I got...
It's across from the river. You can see the river.
So...
You know, and that's just a visual thing, but...
And I think the only, the only downside to that is then we would need to acquire the property. The benefit of the city hall here is we already own the property, and that is a pretty big dollar amount.
You might be able to do a trade, though, because I think the city's more, more interested in saving the river and protecting that area, as we heard over and over, that they can negotiate and build something here for themselves accordingly.
Maybe we don't want to talk about real estate negotiations.
I'm not. I'm just saying ideas. Mike, do you want to buy something?
No.
Oh, okay, good. I have my license.
If, if the council is interested in investigating land acquisition for a city hall, then what we could do, and that was one of the reasons why I was looking at site locations and site sizes for city hall when I was doing this tour, because I wanted to get an idea of how much land we might want to, want to purchase. We can include that analysis in the scope of work as we get a consultant on board. I know that there was some market analysis done in 2019 when we did the campus study, looking at our site where we own the land. And you can see, we do have private development doing housing and things like that on it. And it still didn't quite paper out financially. There was still about a $5 million gap. And I, and it was a high enough level study that I can't say that we got into all the details to understand it. But I think that's part of what we were wanting to look at in the direction from you all. To your point, Councilmember Scott, is that are there ways that we can fund this to reduce the burden on the taxpayer? And so...
That's what I was talking about, being able to charge, to bring the money back into it. And also revitalize the downtown, as we keep on talking about. It does exactly all the things you said in these different areas right in one location.
Right. And, and we could certainly include that analysis?
Well, let's, let's see how many council members are in agreement with that before we talk about moving forward with spending money to do that. So I need to ask, and I can go to you first.
Lori, when you mentioned there was like a site 3,500 feet away, what was that?
So what I did is I just measured along Hopkins Street from the proposed city hall site, right there that we're looking at, down Hopkins to the square. And that was 3,600 feet, which is probably about seven blocks. And then it's about four, five blocks to the river. It's about 2,000 feet to the, to the river. And so...
So the, you know, the concept of moving city hall from its current site where it's... So, the, you know, the concept of moving City Hall from its current site where it's at right now to downtown, it's challenging, 'cause there's only a few more lots in the downtown area. And the size that we're looking at, I mean, it's just gonna be challenging. Not to say it's impossible, but, you know, is there financial challenges associated with it? Is there just, there's only a few more lots that can be really developed in our downtown area? And to accommodate something like this, you know, is the, is there lots available for it?
So, you are...
So, I'm, I'm definitely interested, but my main interest is... So, first of all, Lori, amazing presentation. And this is so inspiring, just to see this, where it's at now. And I say this to our current council members and future council members and current staff and future staff, like, this new City Hall is like a baton that we're gonna continue to pass till we reach that goal line. And I'm glad we're starting these conversations. I'm glad I got to see... You know, I've seen other city halls, Louisville, Carroll, but I've never seen... Well, how do they actually do that, in that six-year timeline that Flugerville? You know, so you're reading through their timeline, their bond committees and stuff, and you're like, okay, this is possible. And I'm already like, looking at dates in my head and things like that. So, if anything, to staff, thank you for getting it to where it's at now. And think of this as a baton, and take the baton and keep running with it. I, I wanna see a new City Hall. Nothing will really instill a sense of civic pride to a community, like a beautiful City Hall for people to congregate and enjoy. And that's where I'm really at. So, the, the decision points we're at, you know, downtown, our current site, yeah, I can see all, all the advantages of where we currently are is, is clear. We have, there's a lot of room here. There's a lot of, I know it's gonna be a little, a little nuanced with elections and trying to convince the voters, you know. We're not against the parks. We love our parks. This is just a dog park. And I didn't know that this current site at one time was a park, so even that would have to be voted on. So, it's gonna, you know, you know, how do we make sure, you know, our citizens are aware of all the intricacies of this? And I'd be willing to serve in any capacity to help guide this to fruition. But I'm, I'm interested in downtown. Ultimately, I'm more interested in seeing a new City Hall.
And one, one consideration, as council's talking about whether there is an interest in the downtown area. I know that it was, hey, there's some activation of downtown that council would like to see in regard to us having a presence downtown. And Ms. Moyer, we've been keeping that very close into anything that we've been thinking about in terms of options. The other property that we do own is there at the corner of C M Allen, which is where the Parks Building is and then the Chamber Building. So, but that has been discussed previously as wanting to be more open area. So, that would be another policy decision that council, you would have to direct and make. Right now, we've been focusing our efforts on downtown presence and then across the way, 'cause that's the last direction that you gave us. So, if y'all want us to switch gears, but again, that is, that is the consideration, is that we do own property there at that corner, so it wouldn't necessarily have to be acquiring if we decided to do that, but that would change the plans in terms of what has been talked about previously for that site.
What about Guadalupe? Don't we own like a half block on Guadalupe?
We, yeah, we own about, it's about nine tenths of an acre, a little under an acre there. And so, didn't really feel like it was enough for a City Hall and parking. But that is why we included it in this, because we felt like there could be a city presence and what would be the best city presence to have in the downtown to help activate it. And how that might work with a private development, again, to Councilmember Scott's point, is how can we bring in a private aspect to this that might help fund where we want to go with that? And, and the downtown properties can go separately. I mean, we made an investment in them, and they can be leveraged to look at it completely private, or we can look at it some kind of a public-private partnership there also.
So, if, Mayor, I'm sorry, it looks like, you know, Flugerville used the, hired some consultants to kinda get them to that first part. Could, could that scope of work include, hey, is downtown feasible, or is it not feasible? And if not, let's, you know, move to our current site, and or how do we redevelop our current site? You know, I just, I'm just curious, you know, if, if we can incorporate that in the...
But to go downtown, you've got to find a site.
I know. I saw you mention earlier, it's, I can only think of a few, and they're all...
I spend a lot of time with Google Maps. It's how I learned to use the distance thing. And I looked at a bunch of spaces that I thought might be available, blank spaces. I could not find anything that, at least I thought was big enough for the City Hall that we want to have with municipal court, enough parking. I couldn't find one. And so, that's where...
We're gonna have to go up, I think, ultimately.
Even going up. It wasn't, wasn't big enough to get the parking and everything. So, I need to hear from y'all down here. Well, you'll need to turn on your microphone. And right now, we're looking at specifically C M Allen, which I believe you're talking about some space that's vacant now?
Yeah, it didn't have to be C M Allen. It's like what Jude said, if there's an area to do it, that's just the idea.
Okay, well...
Making, making money back, you know, from our investment to pay for our investment is one way to affordable housing, revitalizing the downtown. I mean, you knock, everything that you said, a project like that would knock out.
So, what will we do with this site?
Well, you could sell this. She said, Ms. Moyer said it was worth a lot of money. You could actually sell it and use the money to buy the other sites and build with it.
Were you talking about this site or the one on Guadalupe?
It could be either one. I mean, the one I was referring to, where the site's on, on Guadalupe.
The, the thing that is, is going to be an issue with us here is just, would the voters support the parkland coming off? You know, depending on what, what it goes for. So, I think that's the consideration, that none of us really know the outcome of how that's gonna turn out when we do put that before the voters. So, that's a concern we even have about a City Hall, you know, is that are, are people gonna feel that that's the right use for this, for this current site? So, I don't know if, if they would...
Well, yeah, I'm just throwing ideas.
But that's the constraint.
Let me go down. Mr. Gonzalez, you unmuted yourself first, so we'll let you go next.
Well, thank you. My purpose would be do it across from City Hall now. And the reason being is, we already own that land, and the arguments we heard back and forth. I, I just think I would hate to sell this land and get something else built that we might not even like. And that'd be my first choice. My second choice would be go downtown, if this doesn't work out. There was another question I was gonna ask you. Those cities that you showed us in your presentation, did they all have two o'clock drinking hours?
I don't know. I didn't look at that.
You didn't go downtown?
I did not. I was during the day. I wasn't down there at two o'clock.
Not good.
Not there at two AM? Midnight?
Shame on you. That's my preference.
So, you're, you prefer this one, but if this one doesn't work out, downtown would be the next place to look?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Gleason. Then I'll go to Ms. Garza after, Mr....
I wanna reiterate what Councilmember Prather said, that great presentation. And I am a Google Map nut. I've been sitting here Googling, zooming in and out and playing with all this. And man, what I wouldn't give to have a twenty-nine acre parcel like Flugerville has, right in the middle of that map. I mean, you can't, we just don't have anything like that. I mean, I too wish we had something downtown that would make sense. I'm not opposed to having the consultants look at it, but I think I'm across the street too. And partially for what Ms. Ray has said also, is that going to the voters to ask them to take some parkland off the rolls, to potentially build a City Hall and some housing and mixed-use kinda thing, is gonna be a much easier pitch than selling it off to potentially use that money to pay for something else downtown. I, I think that would be a really hard sell. So, I'm for across the street. But I'm not opposed to potentially having the consultant just explore downtown. But I don't, I don't know where that parcel would be. I, I really don't. And the acreage thing really helped too, because I was kinda doing the same thing the mayor was. Really, what, what does five acres downtown look like? It's a lot. And there's just really no places for that. So, yeah, and then I've always liked it, the campus study, I thought there were some good things in there that, you know, I went back and read it again, having it kinda the entrance into the community, right? Right off the highway, coming in next to the ball fields, I think it'll make a really nice presence coming in as an entrance to downtown. So, yeah, across the street. And then if, if my colleagues are open to it, we could at least have them look at downtown. But I don't know where that's gonna happen.
Ms. Garza?
Yeah, my preliminary thoughts echo a lot of what y'all are saying. Across the street is, I think, makes the most sense. I'm also not an architect or engineer. And even though I love Google Maps, I'm not an architect or engineer. I just confuse myself more. But, yeah, but I'm also, because I'm not an architect or engineer, it's like hard for me to imagine the scope of possibilities downtown. So, I'm down for them to just kind of provide something. Yeah, who knows? Who knows what's possible? But I do appreciate all the presentations. It gave a lot of, a lot to contemplate. It's a little bit overwhelming, I'm not gonna lie. Yeah, copy paste what Mr. Gleason said, basically. I, I didn't consider the, the whole like being the entrance to the city and, or like, yeah, the, that part. And that's, that's a very compelling point, so...
Mayor, can I echo that? The whole, you know, coming into the city, it almost, if it was across the street, it'd be like the Civic Road. You have City Hall, Activity Center, the library. I mean, it all makes sense. And I think Councilmember Gleason really summarized that, like... But I think we just owe it to like, hey, let's look to see if there's some downtown parcels that could work. But if it doesn't work...
But I thought staff already did that. The last time we talked about this, you'd reviewed downtown, and the answer back was, there's just not a spot big enough. And I thought we were moving on with, with the plans that we're talking about here, so I'm...
Well, the one thing, Mayor, if I don't, if you don't mind, with, I don't, the reason I don't mind having a consultant may actually put it on paper what that would actually cost, right? What's those dollars, so that when I have constituents call me and say, why didn't we do it downtown? I can say to them, because this costs so much more money. So, that's why...
And you gotta find a site before you can talk about cost. You gotta find a place big enough.
Well, let them kinda look at it, like what would the parcels on C M Allen cost? Like, just, just so that I can say to my constituents, hey, look, this just was not financially viable, right?
Well, we, we know what the fire sta, I don't remember what it was. Well, we know what the fire station, new site for new, Station One was, not cheap.
Part of the presentation to be able to say to everybody, look, this is, this is why it's probably not feasible. And if we have to spend a little money on that, so I can explain it to people, I mean, it's probably not gonna be a...
I think, I think staff's already done that. I, I really don't wanna spend any more money on it. I think we have that information.
And just for the fire station?
And then I still need to go to Mr. Mendoza.
Staff, or was it like, like, you know, somebody whose area of expertise is contemplating these issues? Like, not that, not that the staffs aren't expert. Obviously, there's a lot of expertise. They're putting together this presentation, but there's some people whose like, sole job is to imagine the scope of possibilities like this. And I feel like our neighbors, I've heard, I've heard feedback on both sides. I'm not, oh, my cat, my cat has a hot take too. I'm not particularly moved, like, super passionate about one or the other. So, to Mr. Gleason's point, it would be helpful just to, just to let folks know, like, we, we did our due diligence in assessing.
And I will say, I know, I just was asking the fire chief, and it looked like we spent 4.5 million on the current fire station site, and that was only a little over one acre for that site. And so, when you're talking about the magnitude of parking and everything that would be needed, that we're, you know, just to make sure that we're kinda thinking what that would look like in terms of the price tag that would be added to. And we're also trying, as much as possible, to do this with us financing, 'cause since we can't use certificates of obligation as a funding instrument, without, you know, we'd have to go to the voters if there was something that we wanted to do in terms of funding a bond election. And we're trying not to go that route with, with this. So, just some considerations that we have to take into account as we move forward.
The big thing is, you know, having served on the previous bond committee, that question is gonna come up. Well, why didn't we do downtown? What, what, what was that cost, right? And those questions are gonna come up, and to have that analysis done, I think it's only gonna help.
Can we dust off the memo that we had before that's maybe been a year old? And look at some current pricing of what downtown costs? And come up with something on our own that would... I, I agree, those questions should be answered. I don't think we need to pay more money to get that. I think staff has already done ninety, well, it was a hundred percent of the work at the time, updated according to the dollars.
And, and I wasn't even meaning necessarily having to hire a consultant to do it. I know, like, with the fire station, we've looked at these, we have kind of appraisals what this might cost. Just to have that data kinda aggregated, so when it comes up...
Well, we, we have that established. We're going around and round, but we've got that established.
We have our real estate manager on staff too, that can help us with that.
And I still need to ask Mr. Mendoza his thoughts, and then I need to give mine, which are probably pretty clear. But, Mr. Mendoza?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I spent decades, and I'm sure people who've been here longer than I have have saw the same thing, to see this land sit bare for decades where our current library and our current Activity Center sit. I am somebody who will always push for revitalization of downtown, that that's just, everybody says it's our heartbeat, that that's where we need to bring more people. But it's not like this is taking the City Hall and putting it three or four miles away from downtown. We are condensing things here. When we lost the jobs, or at least the traffic that was happening at the courthouse, it hit us hard. It affected downtown, and we feel the ripples throughout, let's say, three or four miles around the downtown area. I am in favor of going across the street right now, just because it does give us individuals that are still drivable to downtown area. I do wanna make it a point that I do not ever wanna sell parkland to anybody. This is, you know, land, you know. I couldn't imagine anybody thinking that it's a good investment to sell things if it's just land that keeps going up in price that we can maintain. I like this image, and Lori, thank you for everything you've done, especially breaking it down very simply to this image here of what it's supposed to look like, or how we like this. This design should let the city of San Marcos know just how important it is for us to have public transportation and access for those who are gonna live this close to downtown to be able to bike ride, walk to downtown. If we're gonna put townhomes here, affordable housing, we need to still emphasize how important it is for us to have access to downtown and around our area. But as it sits right now, let's go ahead and look at the site across the street.
Okay. And y'all may recall that I was not originally far the proposed site across the street. And I still think it's a bit small for that. I would rather stay here because of the size. But as soon as, and I don't remember who it was, that said, imagine when people are driving into town having a lovely City Hall with some additional functions. And I mean, I changed my mind like that. So, I'm still for the proposed site. I think it makes a lot of sense. I don't think we get, for the same building, I don't think we'll get that same impact if we go down on, on C M Allen. I just don't see how dollar-wise that's ever gonna work. And, but I like your thought about tying, no, about tying downtown and the river together. But that's part of what we're gonna do over there, the Parks Building and the other.
And that, and I will tell you that on staff, we know the importance that it is to council and to the community to make downtown be a, a big part of whatever we can. So, we've always looked at this really as a gateway into the city and into the downtown. So, we have looked at it, yes, as, as the, you know, the municipal kind of row, but also as being that gateway into the downtown and having that connectivity. Because just like you said, Mr. Mendoza, it's not that far from the downtown. And if we have the right infrastructure that really connects City Hall to the downtown, we have people on staff now that walk to H E B, or they walk downtown.
I see them walking downtown for lunch all the time.
You know, to go, to go down for lunch and things like that. So, I think as long as we have infrastructure that can help to facilitate that, we can try to do what we can to really activate that ourselves.
And we need to remember that the 100 East West starts on Guadalupe. So, the 100 block takes you to North LBJ. We're the 600 block. I mean, it's not that far, and you get a lovely view of the river as you're going downtown. I, I mean, yeah, downtown from here. I think we just need some more infill type things, but that would be one of them. And, and so, I am absolutely for the proposed site. I think we need to move on with that. We said we would like to do something downtown. I don't believe that there is anything feasible, and I'm ready to move on with the site across the street. That's, that's where I am. Let's see, so...
Mayor, to get this moving, and, you know, it's like, I keep thinking the Civic Road, and, you know, I'm like, yeah. Across the street, let's, let's get the ball rolling. And I'm doing some gut numbers. I'm like, okay, if we spent four million dollars on the, where the fire station is, I'm like, this is probably, you know, at least ten, twenty times in size and scope. You know, this is gonna be a significant amount of more money.
This is gonna be, the building's gonna be the huge, huge part.
And when you go downtown, and I've, you know, driven around and just tried to kinda envision, what would we do? Where would it go? It's hard to envision where that would happen. Across the street, you could do that. Where would it go? It's hard to envision where that would happen. Across the street, you can do that, right? And, and that's, that's a big part of it. And, and doing these kind of things is kind of being visionary. So I'm, I'm ultimately probably, you know, going to be wholeheartedly across the street. I just want to be able to, to the public, if it goes to voters that we have all about.
And, and staff will get that for us.
Thank you.
And however many stories we need to do, I'm thinking we're going to talk about two or three, uh, to go across the street and that's fine. And what we had talked about before is kind of overbuilding, building for the next 20 years and then rent out some spaces to other folks in the meantime who have five-year lease, 10-year lease. As we need the space, we'll, we'll move forward with that. So we got that done. And now, Ms. Garza, she has her hand up. And then I want to go back to Ms. Moyer.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo, um, Mr. Praether. Um, I'm, I'm down to just, uh, like, strongly support the, across the street. Uh, the power should belong to the people and the people, all people. Where do they go? The library, the activity center. I think it also normalizes this whole, like, you can, um, you can be a part of, uh, like civi- can be, uh, engaged civically is, that should just, that should be just as normal as you go into library or go in to take a class at the activity center. So, yes, down. I li- I like it. I think this is super productive conversation. And thanks for telling me that price was a fire department, because, yeah.
We, we approved that, um, a while back. Okay, so now, and y'all, we've got several.
I understand.
Hold on one second. We've got a number of executive sessions to go through and I've got all these questions to ask. So from this point forward, if we would not repeat ourselves and, and try to roll forward, it would be helpful.
Okay, I wasn't against the location of downtown. The thing that I want to make sure we don't do again is do what we did when the Justice Center was built. And I told them, do not rent from there, build our own. And there was a reason for that. A government needs to own their own building. And now what's happened? We're getting kicked out. This happened when Jews on Watch Two. So you hear these arguments. I don't want to do the same thing. If we can build it, build it over here, build it up, make money off it to help pay the debt down and grow, I would really like to include that into the plans.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, because that, that has not been our, our normal MO.
May we move on now, please?
Yes, you may, Mayor.
Okay, so, and I also want to thank you for taking all the time, uh, to do some research for us with some kind of comparable cities. So thank you. Okay, so now I think my questions are, do we want to move forward with, and we said P3 a lot. I think we said public-private partnership a few times, but just for the public, those are the same things that we're talking about. So are we looking, uh, are we ready to do a P3 financial services analysis of the new city hall site? Current city hall site, and I'm not sure, can I take downtown parcels off of this list now?
Yeah, that would be.
Or, or the ones that, the, the Guadalupe Street that we own? Do we want, that's what we're talking about?
That's what we're talking about here.
Can we say, I'm going to change this to Guadalupe Street lots?
Perfect.
On mine, okay. So, uh, Council, I'm just going to go around and say, are y'all ready to, uh, ask staff to engage in this analysis, which means to go out and hire somebody?
Absolutely.
Mr. Praether's a yes. Mr. Scott's a yes. Uh, I'll wait for Ms. Garza. I'll come back to her. She's a yes. I'm a yes. Ms. Gonzalez?
Uh, when you say partnerships, does that mean they're going to be part owners or?
No, this first analysis would only be a financial analysis.
I'm okay with that.
Coming from then, then we decide how we're out.
I'm good with that. Thank you.
You and I are going in the same direction, I think. Mr. Gleason, you good? And Ms. Mendoza?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we are all yeses on that one. So now, the next one, would it be better if you just stated it instead of me?
Sure. Um, are you all willing for us to move forward also with getting an owner's representative services onboard to update the space needs and the programming for the new city hall? And to, uh, carry us through this process for project management purposes?
How is that different from what we just did?
The, the P3 analysis, they're very focused on the finances and the planning and how a deal might be structured. An owner's representative is going to be more of a technical and a bigger picture. And is going to kind of be our consultant as we walk through this in a longer, long term.
More detailed implementation-ish.
Yeah, more of the engineering and the architectural and, and the facility side of it.
Okay. Mr. Scott, yes. Yes. Ms. Garza, she's in. I'm in. Everyone else is doing thumbs up, so my microphone's on, so I'll just repeat that. Okay. Evaluate potential Hopkins Street TERS to recapture redevelopment growth. So we carve it out of the, why not the downtown TERS now, though?
No, we, what we would, what we've discussed is because, um, the Campos study envisioned improvements to Hopkins Street to make it more walkable, to connect it more to downtown. We could look at the potential to establish a TERS district along the Hopkins Street corridor. If the city's going to make this investment in a city hall and improving Hopkins Street, we might be spurring redevelopment along Hopkins and Highway 80. We could look at a TERS that goes from the San Marcos River to IH 35, but it could also be to River Road or even SH 21. And that redevelopment would help to, um, capture value that could be used towards those improvements.
So it would work just like the downtown TERS.
Exactly, exactly.
TERS being, for those watching at home.
Uh, tax increment financing zone.
And, and one thing, if I could just add on the TERS part, is that, you know, one thing I've really been talking about with our team and, and what I want to talk about with Council in the future is just the beautification aspect of I-35 and really trying, and I was talking to somebody today who said, I feel so bad that San Marcos is just gorgeous. And when you go 35, it doesn't look so appealing, you know? So how do we work towards that? So this is one component, as I've talked with them, to say how we could kind of try to accomplish, uh, having maybe some redevelopment, uh, and dollars that could help to redevelop the area. So that's the.
So this TERS would be similar to the downtown TERS, which is in 20, I think it was 11, we took the snapshot of the values, the increase in values, 70% of those tax dollars are in the downtown TERS to go back into reinvesting in downtown, 30% to general fund. We don't know what the percent would be.
Correct.
But that's what we're talking about. As this area becomes more valuable, that some of those tax dollars will go back into paying for some of this, which makes a lot of sense to me.
Depending on what zone and boundaries we set and what your project and financing plan is, we can have some flexibility, correct.
But it takes time to, to work on that, evaluate that and present something to us. So are y'all good with, uh, having that analysis go through and let's, let's start to figure it out? And I'll start on this end this time. Mr. Mendoza's a yes. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez is a yes.
I'm a yes. And then one part of that that was kind of touched on is the connectivity of all of that, too. Um, it is very difficult for pedestrian, bike traffic up and down Hopkins. And, um, it, it isn't very aesthetically pleasing besides our little, um, little area there. So I would be all for that. I kind of was a little hesitant at first, but you did a good job kind of explaining it and kind of changed my mind on that. One question on the TERS, are those 20-year? Do we set the timeline on this? We do.
Yeah, because the downtown was going to expire and we extended it.
Okay.
So we, we get to choose that.
Yeah, I couldn't remember what the time.
There's probably statutorily some limitations on it, but that's kind of what this first analysis would, would help lay out some of those issues for us.
I'm, I'm a yes.
Okay, um, I'm seeing a thumbs up from Mr. Scott and a thumbs up from Ms. Garza. Mr. Praether?
So I, I'm a yes on the TERS, uh, but I want to bring up something, uh, that I took back from visiting Tucson with the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, they gave a presentation. Now, this is their downtown TERS, but their TERS, uh, they changed it to a CEO board of directors for the TERS. They had a, a, um, an aggressive approach to using these TERS funds to help seed, uh, development that allowed for more money to go in the TERS and basically really helped their downtown really, uh, flourish through that TERS and the economic activity that could be generated from it. Because the board was composed of people that understood that. And so.
Downtown business people?
Uh, yes.
Mostly? All? Okay.
But this is a little bit different because this is kind of a civic TERS area, an I-35 TERS area. So, you know, incorporating people to have expertise, you know, into the board, have transportation, things like that. I, I just want to put that out there about, you know, if we have TERS, I don't want it to generate tax revenue that sits there. And, you know, I want to make sure that our TERS, when it's generating revenue, that it's really being used to, you know.
And we can have that conversation when we get this back. And I know that folks will be writing down to give that some consideration once we have one, if we get.
Like, so this is a little different because it's not a downtown. This is more of a civic area at I-35. So I was like, you know, you know, the board consists of tech stock people. Or, you know, I'm just thinking, thinking as I'm, I'm speaking as I'm thinking, but.
But I, I was there also. And one of the things, the takeaways from that was that they were very aggressive. They, they were immediately taking those funds and what can we do with them now, immediately? Not, oh, a couple of years down the road. And they saw immediate impact. So it was just a different kind of mindset of how you handled it and what you did with it.
Yeah, to start making some money out of it first.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, so I think everybody's good with that. Our next one, Ms. Moyer?
Um, we'd like to have you, um, be supportive of us looking at some kind of a public engagement or maybe a citizen stakeholder committee as we, once we get the consultants onboard to help educate that, um, group and help drive that support for working on the city hall. So I would anticipate that what we would do is the timing of that would be after we get the consultants onboard and we get them, um, undertaking that first analysis, which might be about six months, eight months from now. Then there would be information that first would come to you, but then allow us to go ahead and get, um, people onboard.
Okay. And just so's I'm clear, because I have been surprised in the past, will Council be appointing that board?
Yes, ma'am. Flugerville used a model where council members appointed two citizens per council member. And then there were a couple, um, positions that were, uh, appointed by staff, where there were staff recommendations.
That's what we did, finally, with the comp plan, is we either each appoint one, two, or three. We did three. And then where we saw there wasn't representation, then we added Chamber of Commerce, Meadow Center. There were about five more that we added to make sure that those constituencies were, uh, represented, if it didn't already happen through one of our appointments. Um, so, citizen.
Oh, wow, it's key.
Bond, oh, I, I can't imagine doing it without it, but, Ms. Garza? Okay, we're all, we're all yeses on that. Uh, Ms. Moyer, I've got another one here that says, uh, or maybe, maybe this is just reworded. Mine says, consider city-owned downtown parcels in the city hall analysis. Look for activation and city presence. Is that different from anything that we've already done?
No, you've given some, you've given some direction to, to take a look at those at the same time.
That's what I thought. Anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thanks to everyone who's.
Ms. Moyer did a fantastic job with all of this. And she, she blew us all away when she presented it to us. So glad that Council had the same, um, perception that we did.
And there's one I've been to that I'm glad we didn't include here, because I would have gone, I don't want anything like those, that one. But it's often used in examples like this. Okay, so we are closed out from that. Ms. Cordova, now we need item two about the executive session, please.
The city council will convene an executive session pursuant to the following section of the Texas Government Code. A, section 551.071, consultation with attorney, and 551.072, deliberation regarding real property to receive legal advice regarding and deliberate possible options for development of the city-owned property of South Guadalupe Street. B, section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice concerning requirements pertaining to landowner petitions for release of the land from the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. C, section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding a possible settlement agreement with West East Design Group related to the fire station number six generator. D, section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding the state of Texas versus the city of San Marcos, filed in the District Court of Hayes County, Texas, in K, uh, cost number 24-0267 pertaining to the city's enforcement of marijuana law under chapter 54, article four of the city code.
Looking for a motion to go into executive session. Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Ms. Cordova, let's vote.
Mr. Praether?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Okay, we are going to go into executive session at 4:26. Okay, Council, we're also going. Okay. We have reconvened. We have concluded our, uh, executive session at 5:29. Uh, next would be question and answer with the press and public. However, Ms. Cordova, I don't believe anyone has signed up. Is that correct?
That's correct, ma'am.
Then, uh, there being no further business, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gonzalez, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Ms. Cordova?
Mr. Scott? Ms. Garza? Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Praether?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. And we are adjourned at 5:30.